Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cell phones. Please be advised these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request-to-speak form available at the entrance and present it to the City Clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. This time I will call to order. City Council. City Council is the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency and the Housing Authority for the City of Grand Terrace. Regular meeting of August 13th, 2019. Tonight our invocation will be offered by Pastor Hosway Zapata of Centerpoint Church in Colton, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Jeff Allen. If you would, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you, Lord, for your daily goodness. God, we pray, and we just thank you, Lord, that we have the privilege of bringing this evening's meeting into your hands, Lord. And with that, I pray for each and every item that will be on the agenda this evening, God, that each item be treated with respect, Lord, with dignity, God, that if there be any sense of disagreement, Lord, that it be a peaceful and respectful disagreement, God. And with that, I place each and every member of the council who is here this evening, Lord, the mayor, all the city officials, Lord, and any community members who are here as well, God. Lord, we just want to honor you with everything we do. And, God, I pray that everything that happens here this evening would be guided by you, Lord, that your hand be guiding all the words and demotions that will go on this evening, Lord. We love you, and we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Pastor Hosway. Thank you, Councilmember Allen. May we have roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
I'm here.
Mayor McNaboe.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, tonight we had a special presentation for the balloon team, but I do not see John and Jan Bloodsoe. So we can hold this, but I'd like to at least talk about why we were giving them the... The balloon team, owned by John and Jan Bloodsoe, is a locally-owned company. They are residents. They do a lot for our community events at their own cost. They put up these wonderful balloon structures almost, and they really make a difference in the festivities of our city. And so we will be making sure that they get the certificate of recognition. If they'd like to come to another council meeting, we'll do it then, and if they'd just like it in the privacy of their home, we'll do it at that time as well. But thank you again to the balloon team for all that they do for our community. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, and they are acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, citizen, or staff member can remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. So are there any requests for removal of items at this time? All right, seeing that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Wilson, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
All right, we'll move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also be agendized for a later meeting if perhaps they need to be. Are there any requests to speak at this time? Thank you. Our first speaker is Johan Gallo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Johan Gallo, 22808 DeSoto Street, Grand Terrace. I realize there was an item on the agenda tonight to discuss the grant that we've been working on, and I would encourage the council and the mayor to do everything that they can to continue in moving this forward. I realize we're probably going to miss the budget year this year with Assemblymember Reyes, but we're hoping that we get whatever difficulties there are with our grant proposal and the draft finalized so that we can see it move forward. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Next speaker is David Hahn.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council members and staff. First of all, I'd like to start out and say thank you for your support and your patience in getting our two homes built here in Grand Terrace on Michigan Street last year. It was a lengthy process if you start from our initial ribbon-cutting and groundbreaking, but with your support and with our focus at Habitat for Humanity, where I'm the executive director of in for San Bernardino area, we were able to finish those two homes and have the families move in the week before Christmas last year. So they have now been in their homes almost eight months and are settling in very, very well. We would like to also recognize them as our two newest family members for Habitat for Humanity at an upcoming event that we have at the San Bernardino County Museum on September 28th. It's a gala, although we're not calling it a gala with black tie and tuxes and all. It's going to be an Old West-themed event called Blueprints and Boots. And that keeps the theme of the Old West, but then lets them know that we're looking to continue to build. So the largest purchase... Purpose of this event will be to raise funds for our next build, which will be in downtown San Bernardino. We're looking to do three homes with the groundbreaking later this year, towards the end of the year. But we're also taking this advantage... The advantage of this opportunity to raise funds for our ongoing projects and programs at Habitat for Humanity, which includes doing minor rehab work for low-income families and low-income homeowners in San Bernardino County. So as we look at the different cities that have projects or plans to do projects, and I know Grand Terrace has been discussing this, we are here and welcome and ready to assist in any of those rehab projects that could be brought to the council's attention to move forward with, and our programs are prepared to do so. So I wanted to let you know about that. Thank you for your patience again in getting that project done. I have some brochures and some of our flyers for the event that's coming up that I will leave with the City Clerk, and she can dispense to each council member, and then the rest of them they could leave for the city to use at their own discretion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn. And I'm very glad that you got the houses finished and our new neighbors moved in. All right, our next speaker is Mr. Jeffrey McConnell.
Jeffrey McConnell, 21758 Walnut Avenue. This is regarding the closed-session item about discussion of selling our fire station. We became a city 40 years ago because, for self-determination, I was told by our forefathers so many times, and I... For us to sell off our assets such as the fire station would make us totally dependent upon the new owner and minimize our options, and I don't think we should be beholden to any one owner other than ourselves. So I have three things to say. Number one, don't sell our fire station. And the second thing is, don't even think about selling our fire station. And number three is, don't sell our fire station.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Close public comment and bring it back to council for their communications. We'll begin with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to start out by saying thanks to David for coming out and telling us how things have proceeded, and I'm really happy to welcome the new families into our community and excited about what Habitat for Humanity does for us. So thank you again. Since our last council meeting, I attended the... As the chairman of the San Bernardino County Veterans Advisory Committee to the Board of Supervisors, I attended the... Our monthly meeting, and I'm pleased to announce two new programs coming out of the county VA office. We have a free veterans' legal clinic, and this is the third Tuesday of each month from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Veterans can go to the county VA, and they can get legal advice, counsel assistance, and resources in areas like healthcare, discharge upgrades, estate planning or bankruptcies, expungements even, immigration, landlord-tenant problems or license renewals, any other civil legal issues, things like that, healthcare. So all the veterans out there that may be listening on Channel 3 or out here in this audience, take advantage of this because that's there for you. You earned it. And I'm also pleased to announce our 11th Annual Operation Recognition, which is the Veterans Diploma Project. Now, this is a... If a veteran missed graduating from high school due to military service, or if a Japanese-American citizen missed graduating from high school due to internment, then you can be... Or that individual is eligible to receive their high school diploma through the San Bernardino County Operation Recognition Veterans Internment Diploma Project. And if this is... If you know someone who you think may qualify for this, or if you may qualify for this, and this is even open for families of those who are deceased, they can get this, also a high school diploma. So you can contact the San Bernardino County Department of Veterans Affairs or the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools, actually, is the correct point of contact for this, and the superintendent of schools, either on their website, or you can call them at 909-386-2406, and there's absolutely no charge to participate in this. Okay. I also attended the Grand Terrace Soccer League opening ceremony on Saturday, August 3, and how exciting that was, mostly because my grandson's part of that. And I just want to take this opportunity to once again say thank you from... This is a real heartfelt thanks to the families, the coaches, the grandparents, all the ones who make this possible, and especially the players. Thank you, players, for going out there with your hearts and playing for yourselves, your teams, and for your communities. We love you. On August 6 was Grand Terrace's National Night Out, and I attended that, and that was a great event. We have to, Mr. City Manager. This must be an annual event. The residents, every resident that came out there, and there was a ton of them, they loved this event. So we have to continue this on. Thank you Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, and this... The staff, this worked like... This was such a well-oiled event. I... Hands down, a great event. And the next day, on August 7, I got to go to the Fire Academy 101 with the mayor and Councilmember Hussey and learn what a life is like for a day for a firefighter, a day in the life of a firefighter, out at the San Bernardino County Firefighters Training Academy. And we got to don the firefighters' equipment and go inside burning structures and put out fires, and Chief Mio was there, and he was coaching us along and laughing behind our backs and saying, "Yeah, I'm gonna... I saw you." But we thank you for inviting us out there and doing that. What a powerful event that was. And if you're interested in seeing what it was like to the audience, you can look at probably the San Bernardino County Fire Department's website, or ABC 7 was out there, and they had a crew. You can go to their website. So then, the... Also, I want to thank the city and mention that I went to see the movies in the park. I just love going on Saturday night to these movies in the park. And I went to the last one that we had out at the fitness park where we saw Jailhouse Rock, and Elvis was there, and my goodness, that was such a great event. I mean, Elvis was actually there, and he was singing, and you have to go to the city's website and check this out. And if you're not taking advantage of these evenings out where we watch these great movies and have these great community sing-alongs, then just come on out and experience it sometime for yourselves. So I don't have anything more, but thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I did the exact same thing Mr. Allen did, except for the veterans thing, but, you know, the soccer ceremony, great time. It was neat out there because you get to see the kids that you coach are actually coaching now with their families. So it's... It brought back a lot of memories. I remember I had to go to a soccer training camp, because we didn't play soccer when we were kids, you know? You just... You did football and baseball and wrestle, so it was really neat seeing these young men and women grow up and teaching their families. Concur with the National Night Out, great event, you know, really good turnout. The CEO from Stater Brothers was there, and Assemblymember Reyes came out and, you know, handed the city a certificate. We had a lot of good booths. The Neighborhood Watch Committee, they were there getting signatures. So appreciate everybody coming out that night. It was a little warm, but they came out anyway, and support for our first responders, the Fire Department was there, you know, showing off their stuff, and, you know, they were harassing us for the next day for the Fire Ops 101. But, you know, it was warm that day, but thank God there was cloud cover. But I think myself, the mayor, and Jeff did pretty good as a team. We did all the obstacles doing the thing, and it was a great event, and you guys put on some good grub at the end, and we got a really nice plaque, and our escorts Kenny and Megan were a great help. So it was a really neat event to witness and go through that and get everything done. On a sad note, I liked my thoughts and prayers, I'm sure, to the City Council too, the fallen CHP officer that was killed in the line of duty yesterday. My son, who's also Riverside PD, gave me some inside stories about it, but it's... You never know what's going to happen, you know? Like I said, I talked to Lieutenant Wolf, you know, the officer was only on the force for three years, and he made a routine traffic stop, and then all heck broke out. So, you know, there's evil out there, and we seen it all last week with the mass shootings. We seen it with the stabbings, you know? Put up with that stuff in the prison too, that guy that stabbed up in Garden Grove. So there's evil out there, but we have to stand for what's right, and we have to show a force, and we have to back our first responders. They can't be there all the time, but we need to take care of each other and pray for this nation, and pray for the loss of the... And mourn the officer who gave his life on the line of duty. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
I have nothing to report, but I also was very distressed by the loss of the CHP officer, and I also want to extend my condolences to whosoever's ears can hear them. I'm extremely sorry for your loss. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing. I will defer my time to you.
Why, thank you. And I'm the only one left, so I get to take all that time. All right. Tonight I wanted to start with the Fire Ops 101. That was a really well put-together day. You can tell that a lot of... A lot of time and energy went into planning. There were a lot of elected officials, a lot of media, a lot of opportunity to show off what is done and how the tools that the firefighters have really helped to save our lives. And then the whole time, I could tell that everybody that was there that day was on their best, making sure that everyone really had a good opportunity to learn and not get hurt. And so, very well done. Thank you very much. And then also the National Night Out. A lot of time and energy went into that, and I appreciate the sheriff and the firefighters and all the volunteers that came out for their booths that had to do with making sure that our communities are secure and safe. And thank you so much to Stater Brothers for giving their parking lot for that. I think that was a wonderful place to have it. People driving by could see there was something good going on, and they'd stop in and see what was happening and join in. I will give my condolences as well to the family of the CHP officer. And on a sad note, John Futch, who used to be our county supervisor representative to the city for a number of years, he has passed. And he was very involved in a number of aspects having to do with education in the community and in the county, and so it's a sad night to note his passing. And then one last thing. I was gifted something that I'm going to then donate to the library for everyone else to get use out of, but it's called SoCal Yard Transformation. And it's a nice step-by-step guide to get the yard you want in our region. This was given to me by Gil Navarro, who is a director on the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District. He says there are more of them. But it's a really nice, easy-to-follow guide to doing things that will be water-wise and beautiful in your yard. So as I said, this is what the book looks like, and I will donate it to the library in hopes that people in our community can take advantage of that. And I will end there. Before I go on to public hearings, though, I'm going to ask our city attorney and our city manager. There's something missing on our agenda, which is an item that says, "Are there any modifications or changes to our agenda?" Because it's my understanding that we have a change or a modification to our agenda tonight, and there's really nowhere for us to address that. Mr. City Attorney.
That is a standard provision on many agendas, not all, but many agendas. In this case, my understanding is staff is pulling the item entirely, so there's no council action that's going to be taken. Staff is pulling the item.
Okay, but it might be nice at the beginning of the meeting to let people know so that they're not sitting and waiting for the item and then...
Agreed.
Okay. All right. So are there any changes at this time?
Yes, Mayor. For the record, G. Duffey, the city manager, I'd like to pull item number G8. I need to bring it back to the council with some modifications to the staff report so it's a little clearer in terms of what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we will move into public hearings, of which we have one. The rules for our public hearing tonight are that to speak on an item during the public hearing. Please fill out a request-to-speak form and give it to our City Clerk. Each person will be allowed three minutes to address the City Council. If you challenge in court any action taken concerning a public hearing item, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, described in this notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. And so tonight our format will be that we will open the public hearing. We will ask for any written communication to be shared. City Council will have an opportunity to ask questions of staff. Our applicant will have an opportunity to speak, and they will not be limited to three minutes. We will then hear oral comments in favor or opposition of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes at that time. If necessary, there will be an opportunity for the applicant to make a rebuttal to anything that was brought up during the oral discussion. The public hearing will be closed, and the City Council will go into deliberation on the item. So at this time, we will open the public hearing, and I will ask the City Clerk if there is any written communication.
No written communication other than the protest forms that will be part of the staff report.
Okay. So at this time, we will have a staff report, and then sticking directly to what is given to us in the staff report, council will ask questions for clarification. All right? So Mr. Allen French, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council members. Mayor Protem. Allen French, Public Works Director. This item tonight, the public hearing for the refuse rate adjustment, staff report will be given by the management analyst, Todd Nagasaki.
Thank you, Allen. Good evening, Mayor McNaboe, Mayor Protem, and City Council. My name is Todd Nagasaki, Management Analyst, Public Works Department. The item here before you is for a public hearing for the refuse rate adjustment. The staff report supports the 2030 Vision Goal, number one, ensure our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for services. The city contracts with Burt Tech to provide refuse hauling services. On June 25th, 2019, the city adopted a resolution saying today as a public hearing date for the proposed refuse rate adjustments. Staff has worked with the hauler to undertake the appropriate public notification members for the public hearing. Tonight's presentation will include a residential refuse rates, covering both 96-gallon containers, 64-gallon containers, how our rate compares to other cities, other services within the residential refuse rates, ways to save money to mitigate impact of refuse rates, and lastly, commercial refuse rates. So our residential proposed rate increase is on the current slide. Our current rate for the standard 96-gallon is $23.98. We have two proposed rates for the residential. One would go into effect October 1st, 2019, at $26.04. The second rate adjustment for the residential 96-gallon is $29.13, going into effect July 1st, 2020. Comparatively, our 64-gallon current rate is $22.61. The proposed rate for 2019 is $24.68, and the proposed rate for 2020 is $27.67. How this compares to other cities within the area, Grand Terrace falls in at the current rate of $23.98. And comparatively with the other cities, it's relatively low. The graph on the screen presented before you shows that it's actually currently the second lowest rate within the surrounding area. And with our proposed rate survey, you'll see that our 2018... I'm sorry, 2019 proposed rate in yellow at $26.4... And four cents. And then our proposed 2020 rate at $29.13 brings us in line with other cities within our areas and their proposed rates within the survey in our surrounding area. So built into our refuse rate, we have other services combined. A large majority of that is the service fee. You'll see in blue within the components, and along with landfill and green waste. Now, comparatively speaking, from our 2019 to 2020 rate increase, you'll notice that we have an adjustment fee here of $1.32 baked in that we don't see within our 2019 rate here. And what these... What's encompassed within our refuse rate includes street sweeping, pavement impact fees, and franchise fees, along with the aforementioned landfill and green waste. Okay, jumping back. So one of the things we were looking into was... Or I was looking into was how we... How potentially your... The rate... Sorry. Money can be saved to mitigate impact of refuse rates, and that could be done essentially from switching from a 96-gallon to a 64-gallon. You'll notice that going from our current rate of $23.98 for a 96-gallon, it's a 70-cent increase for switching to the 64-gallon for the 2019 proposed rate, and potentially saving $2 within the 2020 rate, switching from the 96-gallon to the 64-gallon. And lastly, I want to cover the commercial... And lastly, I want to cover the commercial proposed rate increase. And what's, what we have on the screen is our bin size, three-yard, taking for our standard commercial bin, and its current rate is $142.74. The proposed rate for 2019 is $172.21. And how this compares to our surrounding area, the Grand Terrace rate falls within the fourth lowest, lowest cost rate currently at $142.74, and would be brought in line right around there for our proposed rate for 2019. So at this time, the city clerk will read the latest updates on our Proposition 218 protests.
As of 6:30 August 13, we have received 33 protest letters from the residents in the city of Grand Terrace.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Mr. City Attorney?
Madam City Clerk, of what number of properties?
I need to defer to Public Works Department.
Yes, I can report on that. So we had 3,750 parcels.
So based on that number, Madam Mayor, there is no majority protest?
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Okay. So that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time. Representative from Burttec, Mark Arwin, is here to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hesse, and then Councilmember Allen?
Correct me if I'm wrong, the 64-gallon container, you know, I'm hearing rumors out there that we said, I don't know, Mr. Steph, you can probably answer, that we can have that in the city. Have you heard anything about that?
The 64-gallon container?
Yes.
You can certainly have that.
Okay. I just want to clarify it over the thing, because people are saying, oh, you know, they were told they can't have it here in the city.
No, that's a standard service.
But weren't we given pricing on that?
That's what we're giving pricing. I just want to clarify it for, to make sure the residents know that it's authorized in our city.
You know, it's...
Mr. City Attorney? Mr. City Manager, sorry.
You know, part of the confusion might be that some communities have a 32-gallon container, and we don't have that at this point in time. And that might be because the 64-gallon has been a standard for a number of years.
Councilmember Allen?
So that was going to be one of my questions, because I was actually one of the residents who had been told that. But that was some time back, and I will, I'll give it another try. And I bet this time, I'll get a different answer, a different response. So, you know, the, we... I'm gonna, I'll come back.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Councilmember Hesse, before you go, I have a question. So with the 64-gallon container, we have actually, and I have seen the 64-gallon containers, so I know that they exist. My question is, we get green waste, recycle, and solid waste. Can I get a 64-gallon for the solid waste, and the 96-gallon for the green waste and the recycle, and still seem some sort of a change in pricing?
We can actually have Mr. Aragon come and clarify that.
That would be wonderful. Please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mike Aragon, Vice President, Burttec Waste Industries. And to answer your question, Mayor, yes, the only difference in sizes is the trash service, 64 versus 95. Your recycling and your green waste remain the same, so you'll have your full-size recycling and green waste service.
All right. Thank you.
Very good.
Councilmember Allen has remembered his question, so we will go to him.
So what I want to know is, other than just getting a smaller can, there has to be other ways that our residents and our commercial operators can save. And the reason I'm bringing this to our attention is I'm on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for the county, and I represent the city there. And I know what California's done to our waste laws, our solid waste and organic waste laws for the next five, it's going to become very intense.
And your question is?
And my question is, we continue to raise the rates, and you've read the report, okay? So we continue to raise our rates, our...
Is this part of deliberation, or do you have a question for clarification at this point? I'm sorry to cut you off, but we truly need to ask clarification at this time, and then we can come back and have that discussion.
Okay. Clarification of what?
Of what's been presented.
Okay. I'm clear.
Okay. But hold that thought, because it's good for the deliberation portion, and I want to hear more of it.
All right.
Thank you. Councilmember Hesse?
Well, let's see if this is a question. Have, we have the rates for Burttec, and they do great services, but did we also go out and look for other rates, other, you know, competitive rates for other companies?
So what you have right now, we have a franchise agreement with Burttec, and so you have a contract with them. So what we've done is, as part of the slide presentation, we did show how our rates compared to other cities throughout the region. So we are showing that, how we are, where we sit in terms of the rates there.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we had another company that would come in and say we could do this for that rate. I didn't know if we went out there or just were staying with the contract with them. I've seen the difference in prices. I was just wondering, and the question was, you know, did we go out and reach for, like, Republican or somebody else to see what they would charge us for residents in commercial?
Well, we, we wouldn't, we have an exclusive right for Burttec to provide the trash service, but the rates that we showed weren't only Burttec rates. They were throughout the, throughout the region, and there were different haulers in that category.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? All right. So did our applicant have comments that he wanted to make, other than answering the question? Mr. Aragon?
And maybe it's best if I address the council after the deliberation, because I probably can address some of the councilman's issues. But any questions of me before those, I'm here to answer those. Other than that, I have nothing.
All right. Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And we will move to our oral discussion for the public. Are there any requests to speak during this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So we will close that out. No need for rebuttal. So we will close the public hearing, and we'll come back to deliberations. Okay, Councilmember Allen, I stopped you in the middle of a point. Please, please continue.
So on page 40, they, in the background, they talk about the refuse rates typically have some level of adjustment due to the consumer price index increases or costs related to services, so forth and so on. So the current CPI, I mean, so our rates are, these rates, residential rates are gonna, the proposed increase is eight and a half to nine percent for 2019, 12% for 2020. The current Consumer Price Index is less than 2%. It's actually I understand, though, from being on this committee, what the future holds for our waste, for us as a municipality, what we're going to be up against, and what our provider of services will be up against in being, in providing those services, because the state's really imposing tight mandates on organic waste disposal. Organic waste, if organic waste were a country, it would be the third-largest pollution emitter in the world, after the U.S. and China. Organic waste, and California alone produces, in the last meeting, I was in, I think they said, 25, it's a huge number of tonnage of organic waste annually. And this stuff sits in the landfills and turns into methane, and it turns into pollution. And so my question would be, reading this background report and this entire staff report, it's obvious that we don't have an organic waste, just recycling program in our city, and our restaurant owners aren't, or are...
So organic waste, just to clarify, that's not the grass clippings and branches, it's, you said restaurant, so it's food that is thrown away?
Well, the, the commercial rates are the ones that are seeing the huge, the huge price increase. We're looking at over 20%. And my, my question is, I'll just hit the bottom line, what are we going to do to help our business owners save money on these costs? Do we have a recycling program? Does Burttec have a recycling program? Is there an educational program that they're providing? And I can, I remember one time we had, it's been more than 10 years ago in this city, we had an opportunity where we provided compost bins to residents, or, you know, whoever wanted them. My neighbor still has one, churns it over. And, and so what are we doing to promote this in our communities so our residents can save the money, and especially our business owners who produce a lot of organic waste? Because that's where, that's what we need to, and this would be a great chamber. Hey, chamber up there, Sally, Jennifer, it's great to see you here. This would be a great chamber program for the business community. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Duffy, did I see something from the state that said that we needed to have a commercial recycling and a commercial food waste recycling?
Yes, that is true, Mayor. And so what the state is doing now, the state is really focusing in on organic waste, as Councilman Allen had indicated. And, but what we're finding is that it is very expensive to have an organic, a separate organic waste program. And so one of, one of the ways that you can, you can do, as he indicated, you can have an educational program that would look at connecting restaurants with charitable organizations. For example, when a restaurant has leftover food for the evening, there are organizations that will come around and take that, so it doesn't go into the garbage. And then also, believe it or not, pig farmers and things like that. So you have alternative ways. And so what we're, what you're seeing, what happens is, the trash component rate usually starts to increase, and then people start to migrate to recycling and other, and other methods. And so, for example, if you have a three-cubic-yard container in your restaurant, and you're, you've got, the container's being dumped five days a week, if you start a recycling program, you might be able to do it four days a week. And so there are a number of ways, but Councilman Allen is correct, and Burttec has some programs, and we need to really utilize those educational components, so the, so the restaurants and the businesses can understand the dollars and cents in terms of how they can manage their trash programs.
Good. Councilmember Allen?
Some of the, some of the things I've learned is that we're going to be required to clean, you know, the reason we can't recycle our plastic is because it's dirty. So we're going to have to, if we can't clean our plastic, then it can't be recycled. That's what the, you know, one of the things that I'm learning about. And so, and then it can't be processed for other uses. And what is, what is plastic dirty with? Organic waste. And digesters, I'd like to see digesters being utilized more. You know what the digester plant is, where we turn organic waste into fuel and put it back into the natural gas system. So bottom line is, it looks to me like we are trying, we are, in a roundabout way, we're penalizing rather than incentivizing, and I would much rather see us incentivizing our residents and our business owners to participate more in these programs. So how can we work together to reduce our overall waste and our organic waste?
All right. Mr. Aragon, you had comment you'd like to make?
Thank you, Mayor. Great questions, great points that are being made. First and foremost, for the last couple of years, the city of Grand Terrace has a full-blown commercial organics program for restaurants and other commercial establishments, grocery stores, so on and so forth. The misconception is that it is cheaper to dispose of your, and separate your food waste than it is to put it in your trash. Unfortunately, the process that food waste has to go through, whether it's a composting process or a gasification process, comes in at a rate of about $85 a ton. Commercial waste is disposed of at the landfill at about $40 a ton. However, state mandates are encouraging, through 1826 and now the new legislation that'll be finalized by the end of this year, 1383, we won't have much of a choice. It will mandate organics recycling. Down the road, it will mandate residential organics recycling. Right now, the focus is on commercial. As Mr. Duffy mentioned as well, we have a very robust recycling program for commercial, and for those that participate, and they have found that they can reduce either the frequency and/or size and/or quantity, number of containers of trash, if they put their materials in the recycling container that is very cheap and is sometimes at no cost. So if you pay attention and if you work at it, you can control your costs. Same with residential, 95-gallon container going down to a 65-gallon container, that's how you can control cost to some, to some point. But really, there is a lot more cost savings that can happen with commercial. But, but also, commercial is going to be held to a higher standard with regard to commercial recycling and organics recycling. So, long story short, the city does have, in fact, the rates that you are looking at tonight, there are green waste rates, which are considered organics, and that is for your multifamily households. The state law doesn't mandate that they get involved in food waste, but they do mandate green waste recycling. There is a complete food waste program, and there is a complete standalone recycling program for commercial, all these for commercial waste. And those are all available to, to all of the resident, to all the commercial residents in the city.
All right. Thank you for that perspective. Mr. Duffy?
Yeah. So Mayor, I just wanted to, on a clarification, what Mr. Aragon indicated, is that the one statement that you said earlier was that you thought you had heard something. And the issue at hand is that we have very, very low participation in those programs. So we have the programs, but we have very, very low participation in the program. And that's why the state is saying, we're not going to mandate that you do it, but we'd like to find, we'd like you to find ways to increase that participation.
Okay.
That's a very good point, if I, if I may, Mayor. Cal Recycle, or the state, is requesting cities, first of all, to establish a program, rates and outreach, and education and whatnot. However, based on their past history, we see in the next year or two, they are going to not only require that you have these programs, but now they're going to have you ramp up the participation, whether commercial accounts like it or not. And that's where the mandate will come in. Some cities have already moved forward and created ordinances that mandate organics recycling, as well as mixed recyclable collection.
But that's not a way to save money?
No. In fact, that, unfortunately, that will cost more.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
All right. So let's come back to what's on our agenda here, and we have the consideration of the adoption of a resolution. Is there any discussion with respect to that?
I have a question.
Councilmember Allen?
Or an observation. One of the comments, or one, one of the comments that's been made to me more than just about any other comment regarding this rate increase is, why does it have to be so much? Why can't they do it a little bit along annually, so it doesn't hurt so much? Why can't they do it a little bit along annually so it doesn't hurt so much? You know? That's, that's one of the comments that more, that I've heard more than anything else, you know, is a little bit annually, like I balance my budget annually, I balance my budget practically daily, but, you know, annually, you know? And, but then all of a sudden, whammo, every, you know, a, a big increase comes along. So, that would be an, uh, just an observation that I would like to pass on to the gentleman from BRTech.
Well, and my observation is that we actually had an adjustment in 2017 and now they're coming back and it's even bigger. So, it hasn't even been that long. Mr. Duffy, you wanted to say something?
Well, and that's part of the issue and why the rates are eight, eight and a half and, and 12%, because you didn't have a rate adjustment in 2018. So, their cost obviously fluctuates because of fuel and one of the, the great thing about recycling is great, when the, when the market's hot, it's great. But the bad thing about recycling, when the market goes cold, you're stuck with all this material and you have, you have to find alternative ways to do it or you have to hold it. So, there's, the, the pricing is subject to those, those volatile, those issues. So, if you want to make sure that you don't have these eight, nine percent, 12% increases, what you have to do is, is to be diligent and come back with rates that are, that are annual increases if it's, if it's supported. And so, you do two, three percent every year versus holding off and then you get, the next year, you get six percent. And, or you get a fuel issue and you have an, you know, exception to the rule.
Thank you. Mayor Protem and then Councilmember Robles?
No, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Hesse?
I, I thought I was, I thought...
No, it was my hand.
Okay.
I was saying what Mr., besides what Mr. Duffy said, we also got to remember that BRTech held raising their rates when the economy was bad for our residents. And I think that's when we came back in 2017 with that increase and now we skipped 18 and we're doing 19 and 20. So, they did work with the residents and the citizens as far as, you know, them taking a big hit on the rate increase. I'd also like to say, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that in the state that we live in, it always comes back to the consumer. Everything always comes back to the consumer. We'd be arguing about rates all day long and then, you know, the rubbish company gets hit by the state and they're not going to, you know, they're going to come back to the consumer. So, that's, that's just the nature of the beast here in this state. So, I just would like to recognize that BRTech did save the residents money by not charging us extra for when the economy was bad. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Councilmember Robles?
Yeah, my question was, why weren't rates not increased in 2017?
2018.
So, BRTech did submit a rate increase request and during the timeframe, the request was submitted, I believe, it would have hit the council sometime in, in October. And so, you, you would have had a rate increase that would have occurred in, in mid-cycle. And so, we did not, we did not move that forward and so, we just, we just held the existing rates. And that's kind of where we are now.
Well, I mean, I, I do the household budget and, and I never pump gas. I'm fortunate, my husband does that for me. And I was shocked at looking at all the debits for gas and how expensive they were and it actually doubled what I had budgeted. And, you know, it doesn't take a lot of observation to understand our gas prices are just off the charts. I did, used to attend our meetings with the county and all this stuff was, you know, on the horizon. I understand the issue, how expensive things are, the cost of, of doing business. I guess, I also recognize that our rates are, are the second lowest in the county. So, I think this is not out of line. Understand, an entire recycling business shut down because of the issue of the cost. I would just say, you know, I support this. I would just like to make sure that we entertain rate increases annually from this board because working for the county, they held, thinking they were helping, they held rate increases for eight years and we couldn't balance the budget and the, the desert residents went, were insanely angry, so it wasn't worthwhile, you know, to, to try to, let's just, let's just do it every year, visit it.
Councilmember Allen?
At the last solid waste meeting that I attended, County Solid Waste Disposal Meeting that I attended, and the, he may, the BRTech representative may have been there, there was a representative from a company who's building a digester plant in Rialto that takes organic waste, turns it back into biofuel and puts it back into the, into the system, the infrastructure. I know there's a digester also down, I think in Paris area. And, so, my question would be to the gentleman from BRTech, does BRTech have a, do we do that? Do we separate the organic waste and does BRTech use a digester to process the organic waste or have a, or any, or have a plan for that?
Mr. Aragon?
Yes. Councilman, we use a variety of methods to dispose of or process organics. I think I mentioned a little earlier, a gasification, which is taking that material, making it into a slurry. The slurry is then put into a digester, creating methane gas and, and that gas is used from a fuel standpoint, energy generation, that type of thing. We also use food waste and green waste to create organic compost because, again, it helps balance the cost. Digestion is extremely expensive, 150 or more per ton, while the systems that are out there are fantastic systems. We also have to keep in mind how it impacts the rate. So, there are great waste-to-energy systems, but we're always looking for the most efficient way to, number one, get the city its diversion and compliance with the state. Number two, cost, making sure that we have the best cost or, or combined cost available. Fortunately, we have multiple facilities that we are able to process the material ourselves and are able to take it to the best processing location. So, yes, we do use that as well.
Okay. That's great. Thank you for that.
Do you still give tours of your facility?
Yes, we do. We have, our, our largest facility is adjacent to the California Speedway in Fontana, but we have one also on Aguamanza Road here in Riverside County. Well, not here in Riverside County, in Riverside County, not far from here. And we have a very large facility out in the Coachella Valley as well. So, it's just really transportation issues right now with our two local facilities. They accommodate our inland empire cities very well. CalRecycle has toured those facilities as well and they're extremely pleased in how we, we get it there. You have to take your material to a facility such as this to prepare it in an effort to take it to a digester. And in the future, when this digester is completed in Rialto, we hope that we'll be able to use that facility as well.
Yeah, that would be great. I remember the man who gave the, you might have been there, there was quite a few...
I've been to several of them, yes.
And so, it was a pretty high-tech way to process it. I understand about how costs go up, fuel prices, and, and I absolutely support a living wage for employees and, and benefits and things because people should be able to make a living in California for their families and live comfortably. So, I support all of that sort of thing. I think that what my ultimate goal would be is, it's, is to reduce the amount of waste, overall waste that comes out of our, our town, our city. And because ultimately, that's, that's the problem, that's what's causing so much of the pollution, is just the amount of waste. And so, if we can promote the proper separation and, and preparation of the waste in this receptacles, then I'm all for that. Thank you.
Okay. And in the interim, we have a resolution in front of us to consider. So, what would you like to do with that?
I, I move the item, Recommendations, one and two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Roblesk and a second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Hesse and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, Mayor McNambo votes yes, Councilman Allen votes no.
All right. Thank you. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. Item six on the agenda is the Agreement for Purchase and Sale of Real Property and Joint escrow instructions between the City of Grand Terrace and Greens Group Incorporated for the sale of city property located at 22317, 22273 and 22293 Barton Road and reimbursement and indemnification agreement between the city and Greens Group Incorporated. Ms. Sandra Molina, Director.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you, members of the council. So, as indicated by the mayor, there are two agreements that are for consideration this evening. Before I get into the presentation, I did want to indicate that this process of drafting and getting these agreements ready for the council's consideration was a very collaborative effort that included the Greens Group. And representing the Greens Group this evening are Atman Kodakya, who's a managing principal, Adam Corral and Angel Orozco, who are from their development team. Also, our city attorney's office, of course, Mr. Agüero, but also Anne Lanfar from the city attorney's office is present this evening and the city manager also spent considerable time on this effort. So, I just wanted to recognize the effort that went into this project. So, this, these agreements are consistent with our goal number three from our 2030 Vision Plan to promote economic development. We also, the city council also identified these items as one of our top priority projects tasked by, to both the city manager's office and the Planning and Development Services Department. The properties that are under consideration for purchase and sale are these, these three properties just to the east of McDonald's. McDonald's is here. As the council may recall, the city purchased parcel C back in 2015, 2016. And just last year, or early this year, we purchased these two parcels here. I do want to point out that the recommendation and in the staff report interposed the assessed parcel numbers for parcels A and B. And at the dais is a revised page, number one, of the purchase and sale agreement that shows the strikeout and underlying correcting that. So, for instance, parcel A was identified as APN 1167, 23101. And so, you can see that the, the middle numbers got transposed between parcels A and B. We did take a look at that. The APNs were just assigned to the different address and, but these are the same three parcels that were, been under consideration and so, it wasn't a correction that required any type of re-agendizing. So, these two agreements, they are included in the staff report, staff page 72 includes the purchase and sale agreement. Staff page 101 is the reimbursement and indemnification agreement. And also, there's a pretty, a very good summary on packet page 114 that goes over the, the deal point. But just briefly, and that was in the staff report, the purchase price for the three parcels is just over $1.5 million for all three parcels. And at the opening of escrow, that, there would be a 10% deposit put into the escrow. This purchase price of 1.5 is greater than the amount that the city paid to purchase those three parcels. Once that we're into escrow, the due diligence period initially is 180 days and during this due diligence period, while the buyer checks the property, checks title and does other investigative, investigations on the property, the buyer has the option to terminate during that time period. Escrow is expected to close about 30 days after the due diligence or 10 days after the appeal period for all the entitlements are obtained. The purchase and sale agreement also requires buyer to provide a concept plan to seller, which is the city, within 60 days after escrow opens. And so, what would be envisioned is a mixed-use development. We've identified preferred uses such as hotel, office, restaurants, retail uses and also multifamily concept within those approximately five acres. But we did also identify in the agreement uses we don't want to see such as a gas station or automotive sales, pawn shops, laundromats and schools. The buyer would be responsible for obtaining all the land use entitlements and the SEQA clearances. And again, during this process, while escrow's open and we're processing the development entitlements and going through the SEQA process, the, the buyer again has the option to terminate the agreement if during that process and when we get to hearings, if there are conditions of approval that are problematic and we're not able to resolve, then the buyer has the option again to terminate this agreement. In the agreement are, and in the grant deed, you'll see that there are development covenants and the, a repurchase option. And so, what this does is that, once the grant deed recorded, these covenants are also recorded with that grant deed. And it would require the buyer to prepare all the construction plans for onsite and offsite work and then also construct those improvements, which would include the grading, creating the building pads, utilities and parking lots. And to complete all these improvements within 24 months, there's also written an additional 24-month time extension should the economy decline and, and extra time is needed to do these improvements, then there's a built-in for a 24-month extension in an economic downturn. So, once these things are, are completed, the, the developer, the buyer would tell the city, I've completed this, please release the covenants, including the repurchase option. And we would do that. But in, but in the event that the improvements aren't done or there's some sort of default, the city has the right to repurchase the property. What's included in the agreement is if the city repurchases the property, we pay, we purchase it at the purchase price of 1.5 approximately and then also third-party costs such as their, their soft costs, their architect's costs, the plan preparation, things like that. There's also the reimbursement agreement and this is an agreement that identifies that the developer would reimburse us our consultant costs, our staff costs, our attorney cost. And while we're in escrow for up to 24 months or more, there's this, like for instance, routine weed abatement maintenance activities that occurs and so, there was a deposit in our escrow to cover those costs as well. What we have written in the agreement, the reimbursement agreement, is that the developer would make an initial deposit of $30,000 and we would draw from that as we process the applications. And there's provisions for, for additional deposits should that amount be reduced to less than $10,000. So, our recommendation is for the city council to adopt the agreements as recommended in the agenda, including the revision to page one of the purchase and sell agreement. With that, staff is available to respond to any questions. Again, Anne Lanfar with the city attorney's office is available to respond to questions and then also, we have the Greens Group here. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Molina. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen?
Director Molina, can we go back to the reimbursement agreement slide, please? Yeah, so, and on packet page 115, it mentions that also, right at the top under SEQA, costs to be reimbursed by Greens per reimbursement agreement? I just want, I just want to make sure I understand it right. So, even if they back out, they have to reimburse the city for their cost. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? All right. Seeing none, I will open it up to public comment. Are there requests, requests to speak on this item? Thank you. Jeffrey McConnell?
Jeffrey McConnell, Walnut Avenue. If you go to, on the agenda, G6, line item one in the recommendations, in my case, on the next page.
I can't hear what page.
The addresses in the A and Z are wrong, what?
Where at?
I'm looking at this handle up there. G6, number 1 on the agenda.
Recommendation number 1?
Yes.
And the APN numbers?
Am I too tall?
The APN numbers that...
The address and the AP numbers are switched for two of the properties?
Right, which Director Molina talked about that in her presentation.
I understand that.
Okay.
Okay, here's the problem. 18 years of coming to council meetings, and I'm on the planning commission also. Whenever there's an error, a typo, it gets corrected by you folks, staff, somebody in the audience like myself, and we move on. Little problem, my CUP from my farm on August 1st, it was brought to your attention, there was a little typo on my advertising, and I lost a month because of it. It didn't get corrected like normally it has been in the past. So now I lost another month. So if I do something or delay my project, or any developer, you know, and it costs me time and money, that's on me. But if the city does a typo and I lose a month of time and cost, who's responsible for that? Why is it all of a sudden a problem? Who's doing the proofing here? I've watched typos for years. Now it's costing me money. That's really what I wanted to bring up. And the city attorney can address what happened, because apparently he was brought to his attention after a concerned citizen brought it to the attention of staff, that there was a period in the wrong spot. So that's my question to everybody here. Why did I get delayed a month?
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to ask the question, but I'm going to bring it back to this item. Why is it on this item that we don't have to bring it back to another time after correction?
Sure. May I address that one briefly, just to identify the difference? In Mr. McConnell's case, it was a public hearing notice. And the purpose of the public hearing notice is to provide the public a good idea of what is going to be discussed at the public hearing. In that case, as I understand, the size of the property was described as 0.5 acres, when in fact, the actual property is five acres. And accordingly, the public hearing notice was providing incorrect notice of what the actual project was. For that reason, I recommended, and staff agreed, to cancel the public hearing and renotice it, to ensure that the notice is accurate. In this case, the addresses for the properties that are at issue for being sold are correct. The APN numbers that are being identified on the agenda are correct. They all reference the same properties that are subject to the purchase and sale agreement. They are not pointing to any other property. There was an interchange between two of the properties, but those two properties are still subject to the purchase and sale agreement. So the public, if they were to look at any of the APN numbers or the addresses, they would be identifying the exact same properties that are being considered tonight.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Our next speaker is Bobby Forbes.
Thank you. On one of the slides, it showed, am I okay? It showed housing, public, housing, is that R1 housing or housing on top of the business? Is that slide available? As what the city might like to have there. Okay, so line 2, it says, preferred uses, hotel, office, restaurants, retail uses, and multiple family housing. Is that apartments or housing on top of?
Okay, so you're reading the slide now, and what is your comment?
Yeah, what kind of how, I mean, is that?
What would you like to see? What would you not like to see?
Are we talking about apartment complex or housing on top of retail business? Because I didn't think there would be any homes right in that section. To me, that doesn't make sense. But if it's on top of a retail business, possibly. I'm just curious as to what that means as far as fam, I know what multiple family housing is, but are you going to put apartments on Barton Road?
Okay, and so we're not having a workshop on this item, and so I'm going to ask you to make your comments about what you'd like to see and what you would not like to see.
I would be okay with seeing housing on top of retail businesses, but not apartment complexes, since that's what multiple family housing means to me, but it might not mean that in her world.
Okay. Thank you. Director Molina, on this slide, are you telling us what will actually be built?
We've identified preferable uses over the five acres. The buyer will be providing a concept plan that the seller, being the council, would see and approve prior to moving forward with entitlements.
Thank you. Are there any other requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for further deliberation and consideration of a motion. Councilmember Allen.
Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion. I recommend approval of all five of the, on the, all five recommendations on the staff report.
Okay, with the amendment to item number 1?
Excuse me?
Including the amendments.
Yeah, including the amendments to the...
Item number 1.
Item number 1.
Okay.
Do you want me, I'll read them if I need to.
I don't think so.
No, and they're standard in the staff report. So I'll summarize. The council would be approving the purchase and sale agreement, the joint escrow instructions, and the reimbursement agreement, authorizing the mayor to sign both, or sign the purchase and sale agreement, and the city manager to sign the reimbursement and indemnification agreement.
I concur.
Thank you.
Second for a second discussion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Allen and a second by Councilmember Wilson and, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. And Mayor Pro Tem, you'd like to have further discussion.
These will be directed to the city manager, and believe, city manager and city attorney can verify, so that if there are questions later, we can get these things on the record. According to the, some of the comments in relation to the purchase and sale agreement, you have 180-day due diligence that doesn't usually consider processing for entitlements and sequoia. So I'm not exactly sure why that is, but maybe we could explain that. There's a, there seems to be a free lunch clause for extensions, and I believe we've talked about that before. But if there were any extensions, then they would need to be for a price. A little concerned about the work covenant and the fact that it's open-ended. And then, can you explain for us the purpose of the lot tie? Not everybody understands what a lot tie is. And then, so far as the title approval, do we have an early copy of the exceptions? Are there anything that are sitting out there that what we would consider as bombs? And then, we have discussed a little bit about the idea of a shuttle rep in relation to helping the Greens Group move through the process. And I guess we could probably talk about that in a later discussion, but just like to find out if there's any interest by the council for that. Also, excuse me. Oh, yes. There's an issue about post-closing covenants. Not aware of any post-closing covenants. If there are, would there be something that we would consider a bomb? And then, the repurchase includes costs to keep it off the market, and that's another issue that we've talked about. And I don't see anything in here that has anything like that, so it would be kind of in force with the extensions. In other words, if the property is kept off the market and for some reason, economy or whatever, the buyers back out or find a reason to object to title or entitlements or half a million other things, does the city realize any benefit for keeping the property off the market in a market that is fairly warm? So those are the questions I'd like to get addressed before I vote.
Mayor Pro Tem, will you clarify what you mean by a shuttle agreement?
A shuttle rep.
Okay.
So, and I guess I would call that a special, a person that is kind of a specialist that helps a large project move through the process, so that there isn't a question about definitions, especially in processing, because the worst thing that can happen to any property developer and any city is not to be able to count on the time that is statutory in the subdivision code for issues because somebody had a misinterpretation. And so a lot of cities in the Inland Empire either employ or use a consultant to basically shuttle the, shuttle the unit through the process to make sure that there aren't any inconsistencies. They review, plan check comments, they make people aware, you know. A developer, any kind of developer is going to have a whole bunch of things on their desk, and they may not be focusing on something that could cost us and the developer many months if they don't have a heads-up.
All right, thank you. Before I get to the questions in the agreements, I'm going to ask Mr. Duffy about having somebody on our staff or employing a contractor to walk this through, so that we don't get hung up on definitions and others, as Mayor Pro Tem was saying.
Yes, Mayor, and Ms. Molina can actually probably elaborate on this, but one of the things that we did in anticipation of this project, we actually have contract, or contract workers working for us through planning consulting companies that we're able to utilize and assign this project to, to make sure it gets the attention that it needs. And so that's shepherded from the very start to the very end of the project.
All right. And Ms. Lanfair from Alshere and Winder, do you have a list of all of Mayor Pro Tem's questions with respect to the agreement?
I didn't quite expect that number, but I will go through them. The one that I can answer quickly is the lot tie agreement. These are three separate legal parcels. And under the law, they could build it out and transfer off one of those parcels. And that's not part of the anticipation here, it's to be a single project. So they can either do a lot tie, which ties those three parcels together, that they would have to sell them all together. They can't split them up. They're most likely probably going to do a new parcel map, and then they can do that. But until that is determined, the PSA actually says either a lot tie or a parcel map. I anticipate a parcel map, most likely. But, you know, if they don't, if they're going to hold the thing and develop it themselves and hold it, you want those parcels tied together. So that was the reason for the lot tie reference. I'm sorry, could you maybe?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you for that explanation. You know, I think it's important for people, we use a lot of nomenclature, and not everybody understands it, of course. 180-day due diligence with an unusual clause in it for processing entitlements and sequoia. You know, I love the idea of getting rid of risk, but at the same time, it seems off of one side.
Well, there's actually two periods that are going to run concurrently. There's the due diligence period in which they are going to review the property, soils, all of that. And concurrently, they're going to be processing the entitlements. But the entitlements undoubtedly will take longer. So they have to do the look at the dirt period within the due diligence 180 days. Meantime, the entitlement period is longer, but they can actually cancel at the end of the 180 days if they don't like the dirt. There's some problem in it, it's contaminated, who knows? So they have a right to cancel at that point and get their deposit back. Once that 180 days goes by, it's not completely hard yet, the money, but the entitlement period is still concurrently running, and they have an obligation to be consistently and diligently prosecuting the entitlements. So the extension, they do have an extension right in there, but only conditioned upon them actually having been proceeding promptly. If they just sit on their hands, that's not the right to an extension. So that's the compromise we make, because the entitlements are obviously more up in the air as to what will be approved by the city, planning and various other requirements. And sequoia is going on concurrently as part of the entitlements, which the city is basically going to handle.
I know you are familiar with this concept, and usually, after about 45 to 90 days in a purchase and sale agreement, especially in an aggressive market, you usually see a step go hard. So in essence, they will, you know, look at the stuff that they can do short-term. And then, sequoia and entitlement issues, you know, those are third-party situations. We both take risk in those, but the things that they can take care of, the creature comforts, they can do, usually go about 50%, go hard, you know, 150 grand at $75,000. In other words, it makes, it gives the developer an incentive to continue. Otherwise, we're hanging out there for 180, 180 days, and at the end of it, I don't like the dirt. And they get their full 150 grand back minus whatever costs we've spent.
That's true. That's part of the negotiations that went on in this deal. But the developer will be expending money. As you know, the developer is going to be hiring an environmental specialist to examine the property, soils, engineers, all of that. And part of the consideration for this aspect is, if they do cancel, we have the right to get all the plans, all the reports, everything, and the right to reuse them with another developer, which can be very valuable, and then remarketing it.
As long as we pay for the work that they've done, or?
No, they pay. I'm sorry, I shouldn't point.
Okay, so then we get, so we get the right to copy, basically, and then use for?
Yes, we get the assigned, all of those aspects. We do not have to pay anything. And in their contracts with those third parties, they are supposed to make sure that it is assignable to us, and we have the right to use it.
That's a good thing. Thank you. You've answered that question completely. The no, no free lunch for extensions.
Which extensions are you talking about in the covenants and the grant deed, the post-closing covenant?
No, the actual, the purchase and sale agreement passed the DD. If there, there's a clause in there that says that anything past the 180 days, they can exercise an option to extend as long as it's both parties, but there's no money involved.
Well...
Because that kind of thing can happen, you know.
But it does say both parties, which is always kind of an interesting thing. They don't have a right to extend. We have to agree to it, but contractually, you can do that anyway, at any time. So it was comfort language is the way I look at it. It was no harm. And, you know, we are trying to work together with them. We didn't apparently have a lot of other developers coming in with approaches that were acceptable generally to the city. So it was more of a, we want to work with these guys and, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, go on. The title approval, are you guys looking at the title, or?
Yes, when we bought the properties, we were involved, and at that time, we had title policy issued. Well, I don't know if you're familiar, you probably are because of your background, but a title binder. We actually had title binders, which cost 10% more when we acquired them. That, the seller pays for the title policy. We paid an additional 10% for the binder, and it's for three years. And the titles are clean. So when we turn around and sell, which we're responsible for the cost of that, we're going to save 90% of those premiums. But I am, I have gone over those title reports, and I did not see any major issues at all. We wouldn't have closed until we had those cleaned up. So the title is not really something I anticipate a problem with.
And my understanding that is an ALTA?
An ALTA non-extended. It's not an ALTA extended.
Okay, that's all of it. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, any further questions? All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Allen for items, for Recommendations 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 with the amendment to item number 1, and I have a second by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNambo voting yes.
All right, that's wonderful. We look forward to working with you through this project. We'll move on to item 7, which is an amendment number 3 to contract with St. Francis Electric LLC to increase the total annual compensation by $10,000. For a total annual compensation of $20,000, extend the term of the contract to March 31, 2022, and clarifying the obligations of the city and St. Francis Electric LLC under the agreement. Mr. Allen French, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, here to present this item for the number 3 amendment to the St. Francis Signal Maintenance Contract. This item supports staff, goal number, I'm sorry, 2030 goal number 2, maintain public safety. And the original contract was executed in March in 2017 and was for a three-year period with two one-year extensions going to 2020. There was an amendment number 1 to include Litton Avenue signal, and amendment number 2 to replace the safety lighting at all the intersections with LED lights. This contract covers eight signals in the city, and the scope of the work for the... This contract covers eight signals in the city, and the scope of the work for the signals includes the routine maintenance. They're out on a monthly basis to maintain those signals, and it also will include the emergency on-call services should there be malfunctions. At this time, I'm sorry. At this time, staff is recommending to council to authorize the city manager to execute the amendment number three for this contract in an amount not to exceed the twenty thousand dollars, and to extend the contract for the term to the 2020 time period. Should the council have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. And there's a representative from Saint Francis here as well.
All right, thank you, Director French. Are there any questions for staff at this time? All right, seen done. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion. Councilmember Allen?
So, actually, I think I have a question for Mr. French. Is that okay?
Go for it.
So, Mr. French, so we're doubling the compensation, correct?
Yes, sir.
But does that, does that mean that they're going to use the entire twenty thousand, or is that just the amount that we're allocating, and it may or may not get used, and it may get, the balance get rolled over, and that sort of thing?
That is correct, councilman. It's allocated, but they only use, let's say, for, for maintenance. It's only when they go out and maintain, then they invoice us for that amount. And it, again, the maintenance wasn't reaching that threshold, but we had some emergencies, and, and we were anticipating if there's more emergencies to exceed that, we want to be ready for it.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'll make a motion. I recommend one and two approve amendment number three to the agreement and authorize city manager to execute amendment number three. So-
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Allen.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, item eight will come back to us. Item nine we will move to, which is the establishment of Youth Commission, Youth and Government Week, or alternate, alternative youth programs. Mr. Harold Duffy, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is for the Youth Commission or Youth and Government Week, as we, as council had staff come back and report this particular item. On February twenty-sixth, 2019, council approved a future agenda item for staff to return to discuss the development of a Youth Commission or a Youth and Government Week. Council directed staff to return to discuss the program options and examine resources needed to implement the program. A number of agencies in the surrounding area have youth commission, youth programs like Assembly District Forty-Seven, County Supervisors in Riverside, Ansemirino County, and many other surrounding cities. Youth Commissions or Committees address youth-related issues or provide volunteer opportunities for youth at existing community activities. Youth Commissions Committees are active in those communities with communities, with community centers and teen centers. Youth Commission Committees have staff resources that are dedicated to them. Here's kind of a quick little survey of some cities that we reached out to, to see what kind of programs that they had. City of Mountain View had a youth commission. Riverside County Supervisor District has a youth commission. Forty-seventh Assembly District has one. Seminole County Supervisor has, a district has one. Sacramento, the city of Sacramento has a youth commission. City of Tracy, Ucaipa, Riverside, Duarte, Malibu, Redlands, Ontario, Fontana, Yucca Valley. And one of the things that we did was, we tried to look at all different sizes of cities to determine whether they're large cities or small cities, see if they had, that a youth commission really applied to one or two of the particular areas. What we also determined along the way is, as I said earlier, is that youth commissions are usually found when there is a community center or, or a community, a teen center where there's a resource and they help program with activities. We also discovered that some of the cities who, that didn't have a youth committee had a, either a youth program, a sports or activity program, and that was how they got the youth involved in the different activities. Then we have the Youth and Government Week as an option. Originally proposed by this, by staff in 2015, sixteen fiscal year, it called for a partnership with Colton Joint Unified School District to build student survey of experiences they had in Granteras, in Granteras. High school students would be elected mayor and council, and other students would be appointed to the department heads. And for a one-week period, they would shadow the city council and, and, and staff. Students elected and department heads would build student platform for a student survey, that then the, a televised student council meeting would occur to discuss the student platform. And so it would be just like a regular council meeting that we have today. There'd be elected mayor, council members, and there'd be staff. We'd work with a high school to be able to, to have those students perform those tasks. The platform would also, also be, once it's approved by the council, by that student council, that platform would be, would be reviewed on an annual basis, and actually on a regular basis by, by the actual city council to look at the youth-related issues as pertaining to the platform that was approved by the youth council, council and mayor.
Would they be part of the budgeting process as well?
It can, it can be, certainly in terms of if the platform is approved, and there are things that are laid out in the, in the platform, that material should also come to the council and be talked about during any budget deliberations, under that particular-
That, that wasn't my question, but go ahead.
So, what we have tonight is the Youth Council Commission. There are many ways to accomplish the goals to involve the youth. Based on council's direction, staff will return with a resolution to establish a youth commission or committee, or start implementation of a Youth and Government Week. And so, we're basically here to get some information, direction from the council.
Okay. Councilmember Allen?
Well, thanks, Mr. Duffy and staff for bringing this up finally, putting it on the agenda, bring it up. When I originally had requested this, and I, the, I had thought about actual youth commissions, but then in discussions with it, the subject comes up is, well, the, you know, what purpose, what would they serve? And one of the other options is a selection of a permanent member on the, of one permanent youth to sit on the Parks and Rec Commission as a commissioner. And I really like this Youth and Government Week and the idea of shadowing city staff and members around and learning about the local government. I really believe that that's one of the things that is lacking today with our youth is, and they, they don't get a chance to interact and integrate in their local communities and local governments, so they don't understand it. Maybe they're not learning as much in school about it as they did when we were in school. But I really like this idea of being able to offer this opportunity to those who may take it upon themselves. And so, that's, I like the Youth and Government Week, and, and I also like the idea of possibly putting a permanent member on, like the Youth and Government, they could hold their council meeting and select a, a planning commission, a member of the planning commission board, or, I mean, not planning commission, but a Parks and Rec Committee, or something like that, for example. Because I, when your question about the budget process, Mayor, I know what you were asking, and I think that's a very astute question, that the, the youth can be, have a very profound impact on that process. Thanks, that's all.
Well, my, my question really had to do with visibility into the budgeting process, because it's one thing to, to get a group of people together or, or youth together to say, well, what, what needs do you think we have in the city? And, and there are some wonderful ideas that I know that they can come up with, but then they meet the hard reality of, of the pricing of it. If they are not intimately involved in all the other costs associated with running the city, they are just going to come away from the experience believing that their ideas weren't listened to. Councilmember Robles, you had questions and/or comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that in 2015, the city council approved a host of programs, and we included funding of three thousand dollars for the youth in government. So, this is something that's been on, on the planning for a long time. I think having a youth commission is, is overambitious for the size of our city and for the tight staff resources we have. But I think a, a Youth and Government Week would be good. I personally think shadow, shadowing me for one week would be kind of a lot. Yeah. But there's, again, when we had an intern that, that worked with me, and I took him to SBCTA and, you know, the Orange, Illinois meetings, there's, there's things that they can learn. What I would like for them, because what would be good is for them to understand the nuts and bolts of the cities, starting with the budget. And that, that would be part of their week, and then maybe participating with some of us in our regional meetings would be good. And, oh, the final thing would be is that we would have a permanent member to the park commission for a term of one year. And those are my, my inputs.
All right, before I go back to Councilmember Allen, any other comments? Nope, okay, Councilmember Allen?
I just wanted to mention that there are a lot more youth in our city than go to Colton High School or Granteras High School. So, we should make an effort to reach out to those that attend other schools or the home schools that have requirements to fulfill also.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, I'll bring it back to coun, or, back to council. Do you need a, a motion on this one? Are you looking for direction, and then you will come back to us with a proposal?
If you are going to, depending on which one that you select, if you do a commission committee, I'll come back with you with a resolution. If you do the Youth and Government Week with, with the component that you want me to also bring back something to amend the Park and Recreation Resolution to include a youth appointee, we, we'll bring that back.
All right. Is there a motion for either of those?
I'll make one, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we direct staff to bring back a staff report on a Youth and Government Week with a, like you mentioned, the second one, that one.
So, my direction is to bring back a, a program for Youth and Government Week, and also a slight modification to the, the ordinance or the rule for the resolution for the Parks Commission that would include adding a, a, a one-year student.
Yeah, yes, please follow your directions.
All right, motion by Councilmember Allen.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Councilmember Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to request for future agenda items by city council. These items are listed on our agenda, and, and they are in compliance with our, our council-mandated way that we bring forward items. And so, due to requirements of Brown Act, no other items will be considered, other than those listed tonight. And those that are listed are only listed in a manner that we are saying, yes, we would like to come back to consider them. We are not voting yes or no on them at this time. The first one is Model Resolution Supporting Balanced Energy Solutions and Maintaining Local Control of Energy Solutions. And this is requested by me, but it's requested by me based on a request from the gas company and our representative, Christine Scott. She would like an opportunity for their resolution and their discussion on this item to come to us, for us to review, and give an opportunity to see if we support the position that they are asking for. So, it would be my motion to bring this forward to, for us to review at another time.
I'll second your motion.
All right, so if you would please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you. The next one is called Stop the Bleed, and it is requested by Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. The Stop the Bleed Program is a program that was started in 2015. It's run by the Department of Homeland Security at the federal level through FEMA. And it is a program that teaches a very easy-to-learn, four-step method on how to control traumatic bleeding. I learned about this program when I went to a league meeting when the Ranch of Kukamanga and the Ontario Fire Department talked about how they had installed traumatic bleeding control kits in every classroom of every school in their cities, and then taught all the children how to use the components. And I thought, that was powerful. Because we can't stop the mass shootings, and I don't ever want to get into another discussion with anybody about anything to have to do with guns. My goal is to save lives. I don't want to control guns. I don't want to do anything with that. I just want to teach people and provide the tools necessary to save their lives, and let the people in the higher pay grades determine the gun laws. So, that's what Stop the Bleed is about. And my goal ultimately is that I want us to be able to teach as many residents as possible how to control traumatic bleeding, and I want to have traumatic bleeding control kits installed in all the classrooms of all our schools, our public buildings, the rooms like this city hall, you know, and the libraries, and as many places as possible.
You're, you're asking for-
And I want to-
-this item to come back so we can consider this program-
Absolutely.
...as to whether this is something that we would like to have implemented here.
You're correct.
Okay.
I would like a, a staff report on Stop the Bleed Program, and I've talked with the fire chief about it, and he's on board with this, so.
All right. So, a motion to bring Stop the Bleed Program back for our, our review and, and determination of whether we want to implement it, and I will second that. So, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you. City Manager Communications, Mr. Duffy.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So, we are going to be in Susan Pettit Park for Movies and Music in the Park, or Music and Movies in the Park. The music starts at seven PM. The movie starts at eight PM. Rear Window is James Stewart, really good movie. It's in a beautiful environment. If you haven't been to Susan Pettit Park, I would encourage you to be there. And then also after that, on August thirty-first, is The Greatest Showman. I think that's maybe the sing-along version, so that'll be even more exciting. Okay. And then next we have, we have the Michigan Street Complete Plan. This is actually a workshop that we're inviting the community to, to talk about ways to kind of enhance the landscape and, and calming methods on Michigan, on Michigan Street. As most people have heard, we'll, we'll be extending Commerce Way in the future, and so most of the traffic that's currently going down Michigan should be going down the expanded Commerce Way. And so, one of the things we want to do is we want to make Michigan a walkable, friendly street. And this is a program with the council's moving forward to get the community's involvement in terms of how, what they would like to see on, on Michigan. We will be at the former Schwartz Figure property, which is now Robertson's RV, will be at that particular location at one-two-four-three-eight Michigan Street, and that will be on Saturday, August seventeenth, at six PM. And so, you can go to the Michigan Street, and then from there, you can go to the music and the movies at Susan Pettit Park. What an exciting Saturday evening. Also, tomorrow night, we're back for Cannabis Community Discussion Workshop. City Council will be discussing the federal regulations, history of the state law, the current state law, enforcement mechanism, taxation, state licensing types. It's really important, state licensing types, because there are a number of licenses that are out there, just not, just not make cannabis legal, but there's a number of licenses that the state will issue in terms of growing and, and different manufacturing, things like that. So, this is really going to be a learning session for the community to come out and understand what cannabis is and what it could be in the state of California and in your local community. Also, establishing and implementing local regulatory programs, state regulations and administration. So, we encourage you to come to the council tomorrow night. The council chambers at two-two-seven-nine-five, right here, at- The council chamber is at 22795, right here, at 6:00 PM, that's tomorrow night. Any questions, please contact Deborah Thomas at 909-824-6621, extension 230, or email her at dthomas@granterres-ca.gov. And with that, Mayor, I think I have one more item. And I, it was mentioned earlier that we had the national night out, so this is kind of a video of that particular event.
All right, very nice.
With that, I'm complete, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Our last item is a recess to closed session. We will be meeting in closed session, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.8, property 22582, City Center Court, APN 0277-161-30, that's the fire station. City Negotiator, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, negotiating party, San Bernardino County Fire Department, under negotiation price and terms of payment. And so if you are not here when we come back, we will meet again for our regular city council meeting on Tuesday, August 27th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. And any request to have an item placed on the future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So at this time, we are in recess. Thank you all for being here tonight. All right, so there's three of us here. Okay, we'll reconvene to open session. The council met in closed session, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.8, property 22582, City Center Court, APN 0277-161-30, City Negotiator, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, negotiating party, San Bernardino County Fire Department, and under negotiation was price and terms of payment. No reportable actions at this time, we have given direction to staff. And so at this time, we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting to be held Tuesday, August 27th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned, thank you.